I cannot get a hold of any of these people.
Well, I dropped.
None, Gerald. By that one. No, no.
You know he's gonna need to upgrade his phone.
Did you ever help me?
Okay, guys.
Ready?
Yeah, we're talking about cell towers. Cell tower service.
We call the panel selectmen board's order for meeting here at seven oh three Thursday, August fourth. Agenda approval, the minutes of seven fourteen sixteen, warrants, the mail, road foreman's monthly meeting, where he'll give us his report, twenty fifteen blacktop bids, Better Back Roads grant agreement, and old business, Bill Scully for the panel net metering group, and the status of Mount Anthony culvert replacement, B fifty-two and B thirty-two, and proposed discontinued roads. Anybody got anything to add?
Can we add personnel at the end of the meeting to go into executive session?
We're gonna nominate a clerk under our business.
Under our business. And the salt shed under our business.
Yeah, the salt shed.
So, personnel, when your executive session, that's after all the rest of this is taken through.
There's one other thing. What's twenty fifteen blacktop bids?
Oh, that's a typo.
Is that, is it fifteen?
Yeah, that's a typo.
Well, I just, well, that's okay.
It's a good catch.
Let's just be for sure.
Twenty sixteen.
We're gonna re-ass.
Yeah, or we'll have another problem.
We'll correct that.
Just make it six, that's fine.
Okay. Good catch.
Is that it?
Yeah, I move to approve the agenda run.
Second?
The second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Minutes.
Payroll for seven seventeen sixteen was nine thousand fifty-six dollars and six cents. Payroll seven thirty-one sixteen, that was ten thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-two cents. Payroll seven twenty-four sixteen, that was eight thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents. Accounts payable for seven twenty-two sixteen was eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-two cents. Accounts payable seven twenty-nine sixteen, that was nineteen thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Accounts payable eight five sixteen, that was eight thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty cents. I didn't give the high, the big ones, but there wasn't too many that were over a couple thousand dollars. Payable transfer, janitor supplies.
I move to approve.
That's good.
Second.
All right, that's good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You need to do the minutes?
Yeah.
Go back a minute. Ten minutes.
Yeah. Need a motion to approve the minutes?
I, so moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mail. We've got an interest rebate on silver bonds that runs through, through twenty thirty-five for sixty-eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars. It's just recalculation of interest, so it's a savings that they're passing on for quite a few years. We've got Mont Leger Cities and Towns, their town fair, that's coming up Wednesday and Thursday, October fifth and sixth. They'd like to see one person from each, at least one elected person from each town go to that. There's a lot of things they're gonna be talking about in a few days. Managing conflicts and advanced well-being, long-term financing, maneuvering Medicare, inspection process overview, in your office corporations. So, it's a pretty big seminar, I guess.
We'll just tell Linda if you wanna go.
Yes, if anybody wants to go, I guess we'll just have to, because if you pre-register, it's a little less. But they'd like you to pre-register anyway, so anybody that wants to go to paperwork is here. That's true. October fifth and sixth at the Champagne Valley Exhibition Center in East Junction, Vermont. And we got a thing here from Lynn Singh, talking about the Ruush feasibility study proposal, so, which apparently we agreed to have him do it.
Looks like they're looking for a signature.
Yeah, I guess I have to sign it, I guess, or we agreed on it a couple of weeks ago. That was for eight thousand dollars, the cost of that. Stand check counseling services. This is all James Chirrell, it's the panel transfer station, enclosed landfill. This is about when the certification expires, it's got all the information in here, all the tests that they do and everything else. So, that's, that has to be done, or being done. They've got all the laboratory reports, that'll be here. And we got a notice here from Jim Gilbert, rabies alert. He received a report from Dr. Johnson, the state vet. There was a raccoon captured on Barbers Pond Road, tested positive for rabies. Be alert for any wild animal displaying unusual behavior. Avoid contact, make sure your pets have been vaccinated, and contact game warden, puddle through the state police dispatcher with any pertinent information. And do not leave garbage or leave pet food where it could attract raccoons, skunks, foxes, or parodies. That's from Jim Gilbert, health officer. And we got an update here on our property down there in North Pond, which is pretty dismal. Nothing's happening there. No leads. Had some views, but no leads.
Question on that. Is there any way we could get someone to go in there with a bush hog and clean it up a little?
Where's that?
Our lot down there. It's growing in pretty well. I looked at it the other night, it's probably four or five feet tall with Russian weeds. We have a mobile home lot right there at the intersection of, is that something we could do? It's a pretty small area.
Across from the old store. You see a cement pad there where the trailer was? That's what it talks about. You wanna look at it first?
Yeah.
I'm gonna take care of that, go out, take a look at it.
Yeah, I will.
Super mysterious.
Okay.
And I got a letter of resignation from the lister. She had some problems here, I guess. The letter is here, it would be hanging on the wall, I guess if anybody wants to read it. It's quite long. And Linda already posted a vacancy, so it is a vacancy and the lister posted it already. So, this was Bonnie R. Cutler. I wish her all the best and everything, and I thank her for her time, and I think the rest of the board feels the same way.
Yeah, one of the questions that was on that was to do with training. I think the board as a whole has always agreed that anyone that wants training, we're all for it and we're willing to pay for it. I guess as a board, I would just like us to stress the fact that whether it's the treasurer or the lister or whoever, if they want to go to any training, that this board will back that and make sure that the funds are there so that they can go to it. I don't know if any board members disagree.
Continuing education is very important and we should back it, yes.
Well, we've brought that up about half a dozen times over the last three months, so, you know, I don't know, do you wanna vote on that or what do you wanna do?
Well, I think, I make a motion that we do that, because we should make a very strong statement.
Okay, good.
Well, that was, I guess, part of the reason for the resignation. She was, thought she wasn't getting proper training, but right here in the resignation letter, it says she talked to the vice chair and he said the training was available. It's also in this letter, so it's a, it's pretty self-explained. And I do encourage anybody, and we've encouraged it for the town crew, anybody that, if they need training, we're behind it a hundred percent.
Road crew, all of them?
That's why we made that a motion and carried it.
And road foreman's report?
There's a motion. There's a motion in front of you.
What was the motion?
To back all training for the individual.
Is there a second on that?
Yeah, we did.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I thought we did that every week since I've been here.
Well, it's now, it's on the record now as a vote.
That's right. Yeah, since we brought it up and brought it up and talked about it, talked about it, so now let's.
It's an ancient.
Well, we got the road foreman's report. Replaced four culverts on Burlington Road, ditched some on Burlington Road. Blocks on Mount Anthony Road were driven in, dug out behind them, reset them to stabilize the road. Fixed the bridge on crossroads using pre-cast panels from Salt Shed and filled to stabilize banks on both sides. Still needs guardrails. Cleaning and painting equipment. Paul, Chris, and I went to trenching and shoring class, seven twenty-seven and seven twenty-eight, which is good. We graded washed-out roads. I was getting the trucks and equipment shape. Got two prices on new rooms, one fifty-four hundred from Salem Farm Supply, one fifty-three forty from Hudson River. No luck on used ones yet. They're both made by York and were both ways, seven quarters. Trees down and washouts, falls back mowing, roadside mowing. Salt Shed is moving along good. Looked at case, W two fifty-two roller, asking four thousand for it, and cleaned some culverts. Mason Hill Road, clean trees out of ditches from.
That's next week's plan.
Oh, that's next week. Yeah.
Actually, they started today on that.
And next week he plans on Mason Hill Road, clearing trees out of ditches from power company, cutting high lines, going to White Oaks, put in a culvert ditch, gravel and grade, moving along on plains, on plains to change culvert on Skrumire Road, also planning on a couple of blacktop swales on Hidden Valley Road.
Sounds like you guys are busy.
We'll be, we'll be talking to him shortly as it is. Now, Mr. Scully, we've got, we've got a paper here, looking for an easement for the power line.
Yeah, I think GMP is actually doing that, but I can answer any question probably if you have any.
Well, it's pretty self-explanatory, you've got a map here showing where you're at.
Yeah, I've got a few things to go over with, but we'll do this one now and the other stuff later probably.
You wanna talk about it?
Well, it's really just, they're looking for an easement to come in and put in the power lines, some overhead, some underground. They'll come in along the road, on the grass alongside the road. After I spoke with Nelson, we're gonna bury the line coming in the first little bit so that, because the telephone, or the flagpole presents an issue. So, don't wanna move that, so we're gonna end up burying the line as far as we can to the first, to the second riser end. But they really need an easement to be able to come in and do that now, but also to be able to get in later in the event that there's a repair needed or some kind of emergency that needs addressed, they wanna be able to get in without asking permission.
So, they're gonna dig up underground in front of the flagpole?
Between the flagpole and the road, yeah. So, they'll put, they'll put a pole at the corner. And down from that pole and underground into wherever the next pole would be, which I don't know what the distance is, a couple hundred feet in, I'm guessing. I haven't seen their map yet. They'll put another pole and then run overhead all the way down to the transformer, and then out of the transformer, it's gonna go underground and down to the powerhouse.
How deep, how far down do they need to go?
I think they have to go four feet. It's whatever Vermont code is, but I think it's four feet. It's pretty deep.
I know when we put in that flagpole, we went to put the flagpole in and there's cement underneath there.
Okay.
There's like a slab under there and we had to break through that to put the pole in.
Okay.
So, they may run into that.
They could, yep.
Yeah.
So, that's good to know.
And the, and are you going to have to move any of those big stones?
They might have to move them temporarily, but they'll get moved back.
You'll notice that, one, there's a plaque on it and I wanna make sure nothing happens to that plaque.
Absolutely. Definitely.
They couldn't have just added a pole and devoted around this?
I talked to them about that, they didn't think that was, that would work. You know, we thought about coming in from a different angle or coming in some different way, and they didn't really see a way to make that, make that work for them. And there's also, they can't.
The only reason I say that is I'm kinda familiar with that property and that was a concrete slab there.
Gotcha.
That's where the beam house, they call it, was there.
Okay.
That was concrete. And she's probably correct, that, most of that's concrete there.
Okay.
There is a cellar in through there, you know, where they had, that's where the wheels and stuff, in fire there toward the river a little.
Yeah, okay.
So, where the flagpole is, that was where the beam house was. I'm pretty sure that's all concrete.
Okay. And maybe they just go down to concrete then. I think we have to check with the inspector on that. I'm not sure what the electrical code is.
Yeah, but that's, but those are the things that I'll have to look at, Inspector.
Yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion we sign the easement.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just wanted to be clear, whose easement is it?
This is, will be to Green Mountain Power.
All right, and will they be the owners of the poles?
I need to look at that, and I actually have not gotten the paperwork back from them.
I can't imagine anybody else it would be.
Will we have to pay for them? We're actually gonna purchase them. So, it comes out of our pocket, but I forget how the, how the property, I forget whose property it becomes, but it's very specific in the utility code how that's handled. And they, they will tell us exactly who owns it and how it's been depreciated. So, I, I can't answer because I don't actually have the interconnection agreement from them yet. That'll come out of this whole thing, is that we'll have an interconnection agreement and they'll define who owns it and things like that.
We bought poles up there, we done a job up there, who they're, I just paid for them.
I asked.
And then I'm out of it.
Right.
Okay, then it becomes their, their poles.
I, I asked.
Well, I think it's a very good point.
Yeah, I'm completely supportive of it, I don't know whatever, but, you know, should there be any wrinkles, is that, I do have the opportunity to work regularly with Robert Dostis on solving these kinds of problems. We've solved the same thing with an interconnect when they needed the X-ray machine at the health clinic. So, you know, don't hesitate to, you know, kind of to use that.
Okay.
And I also just wanted to say as a comment, I completely support that fact that going to be burying the wires as much as possible to preserve the aesthetic of one of our very, very few and important history and parks. And, you know, we'll look forward to, you know, that study to, you know, for me, the encouragement is, is to have it as open as possible, you know, for people viewing the river and even seeing, you know, what you're achieving there, as that goes along. And again, that's something I'm happy to communicate to Green Mountain Power or, you know, nudge them, and I would not wanna do it at any cost to the project. And, you know, that's pretty critical.
No, I appreciate that. Some of it will have to be at our cost, just because the flagpole's just an obstacle we, we need to figure out how to get around.
And I think your, that willingness there makes it a lot easier is to, for somebody else to come along.
Right, right, right. Great, thank you.
But I think that is a, I was down there, as you know, yesterday with you, and I think it's a pretty special place that we can be proud of in this town and this board. You've just worked for years and years and years and years.
It's been a long time.
And to actually have somebody working there today, today and yesterday, is really pretty, it's a milestone.
Yeah, yeah, I encourage you all to go down there. They started on Monday. They haven't started a lot, but they're, you know, they're getting mobilized and getting everything down there and what have you, so it's pretty neat. You need to see.
Bill, just to clarify again, you're putting a flagpole in the corner, excuse me, you're putting an electric pole over in the corner by the bridge?
Yes.
And then the wires are gonna go down underneath?
Correct. And then they will pop back up, whatever the distance you go to the next poles. I don't actually know what that is. I think it's a couple hundred feet.
I think it shows on the map.
Okay. Now, I was just, I just wanna make sure that I had it right, 'cause I was visioning the flag hitting the wires and all that kinda stuff.
Right, right, it'll be a ways down. I actually haven't seen that map. I helped them generate the, the property map, but I haven't seen a map of where they're putting the poles yet myself.
Right. Of course, that park is very special to me. It's just named after my apartment.
I didn't know that.
And that flagpole's like a monument.
Gotcha.
It's very special.
Gotcha. That's good to know. Thank you.
The only concern I had with it was I didn't believe that they wanna go underground.
They didn't want to, but there really wasn't another option. The railroad tracks present a whole nother set of issues and underground ended up being the, the most reasonable way to, to do it. They don't like to go underground too much either, other than near the powerhouse, they've told me.
That's right. And there's a reason for that.
Yep.
Too much heat. Okay, everybody's supposed to sign this, I guess. Do you really authorize this?
Everyone.
Okay. So, what do you think? You wanna sign it, fellas?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Oh, we gotta approve it.
Well, I gotta sign it anyway.
Yeah, but you're gonna finish your motion.
Well, he said he made a motion. He must be talking to himself there, I think.
Aye.
Aye.
Good with me for now?
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Bill.
Like physical affairs as you and Joel tonight.
Yeah. Well, that's it for the mail, anyway.
Set that background so she can do it, but it didn't get lost.
All right, so I guess the road foreman's report, I guess you're up.
Well, you read it already, so.
I did read what you, what you did before, but we're gonna have the blacktop bid, you might wanna elaborate on, you wanna, do you wanna, are the bids been opened and clarified and everything else you want to do?
Yes.
So, they've already been discussed and everything?
No.
No.
No discussion.
They've just been opened. We're written down. You wanna see them?
See what we're gonna do here, talk for the same.
Here we go, sir.
Yeah, there, that's his main sheet.
They wrote them out on here for us.
Oh, there you go. That's good enough. All right, well, we had Peckham and Pike. And how come Bredorian is in here just with a number?
It's all he sent. He didn't send any tonnage or?
No, it's cost per ton.
Yeah.
That's all he's got there.
That's all he sent. It's in the file.
Oh, all right. Okay. So, all right, well, anyway, cost per ton.
I think that's where you're, we're gonna have to look at that.
Peckham was sixty-four eighty-five, and Pike was seventy-six thirty-nine, and Bredorian was eighty. Now, the total bid for Peckham was ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and four dollars and fifteen cents, and the total for Pike was a hundred and two thousand nine hundred and seventy-three. Now, this here is for two forty-eight. What are you talking about, two forty-eight for North Pond Road? What does that mean? Two hundred and?
Ton.
Two hundred and forty-eight tons?
Ton.
That's all it's about.
Yeah.
Says cost shim, that's all. Two forty-eight. All right, two hundred and forty-eight on North Pond Road, a hundred and seventy-five on South Stream Road, four hundred and seventy-one on Jackson Cross.
But see our total tonnages?
Yes, yeah, I see them.
So, we got the best bang for our buck with Peckham. We got.
Yes, I see that, but I was just curious, I was gonna ask that question, why we have different tonnages for, for these roads that are going the same distance?
It was, it was, they're all shimming and it was hired. All them guys rode the roads with me and.
Yeah, so this is kinda like a, like an estimate.
It was an estimate.
But you're gonna pay, we're gonna pay so much per ton period.
Period, yeah.
Period, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, anyway, Peckham was fifteen hundred and thirty-nine tons of material and Pike was thirteen hundred and forty. I already gave the, ninety-nine thousand for Peckham, which was eight hundred and four, and Pike was a hundred and two nine seventy-three. What do you want to do?
I'd like to make a comment. Go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion, then you can.
Okay, go ahead.
I was gonna make the motion that would go with the sixty-four eighty-five a ton. I think it was Peckham.
I do have a question. I do have a.
Yeah, Peckham.
I do have a question on that. I didn't know if they had that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Can discuss now, right?
Yeah.
My question on that was, was did they put in their bids not to exceed those tonnage, that tonnage?
No.
I've seen that done before.
No, none of them did.
No, we didn't.
Okay, all right, okay. It's just a question.
That wasn't the way it was spent, yeah.
None of them did that.
Okay, all right. So, probably, probably, I would just like to, you better keep an eye on it. That makes sense, right? Okay, I'm happy with it.
And one of, one of the things we discussed at other meetings was that these people come in every day with their ton shill, and he'll be adding up.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I don't have a problem with that. It was just a question.
See where we're at.
And before we do the last project, which was the Burrington Road piece, we'll know how much we have, and then you can, you can tell them what tonnage you went away there.
That's right.
But I, but I do know, my comment is that when we, when we estimated this, this work and the amount of money we were gonna spend, we worked with numbers that were much higher than that.
Which is okay.
So, which is okay, it's definitely to our benefit, but I would like to, I would like to see us use the amount of money that we originally decided upon, the hundred and ten thousand dollars.
We can do that, too.
And, and again, that'll, that'll, that will, the end of the project will be Burrington Road, and the amount that we do on Burrington Road will be based upon what's left.
That's the last, that's the last job. That makes sense.
Everything else is done first.
Okay. Just where I'll understand that.
Most all of this shimming or is Jackson Cross is actually paving part of that?
That's, that's gonna be a paved.
Section?
Yeah.
On Jackson Cross?
Yeah. One of them's gonna be a paved all the way across for a while, and the other one's gonna be a paved. I think the one out towards the end was gonna be a paved on one side. It was real bad.
Right. Burrington Road was an actual pave.
Yeah.
Paved, full twenty feet wide.
Okay.
And some of that was on Jackson Cross Road.
All right, well, I imagine.
But we do have the estimated number. That's why I wanted to bring that up, that was all.
Shilling's hired.
Yeah, well, I know.
Well, the only reason that I asked that question, is when people know what to expect. Are they gonna get just a shim or are they gonna get, you know, some of it gonna be blacktop all the way across?
Yeah, so, yeah, Jackson Cross Road is.
We're gonna, we're gonna spend the money and we're gonna.
No pounds gonna be shipped.
The other, the other thing we have to think about is Burrington Road's gonna need to be.
The other thing we have to think about is Burrington Road's gonna need to be patched before they can go in and pave. A couple of weeks ago, we decided we gave approval for Joel to purchase a small roller for fifteen hundred dollars. You can explain, I mean, it's not available anymore, right?
Yeah, it ended up, when he got it, was a three thousand dollar roller. So, and it wasn't in real great shape. I looked at one over here in North Pownell for four thousand dollars, which actually was a pretty nice roller, really a hair bigger. It was about a five thousand pound, two and a half ton. But it's vibratory, it's got the water on it for blacktopping. And it isn't a bad...
I think it's something we need. I think it's an investment for the town that can be used in some other situations, too. I think it can be used in our culvert installations.
You can definitely use a vibratory, you know, culvert installations, and, yeah.
How much yen was it? Four grand, you said?
You can, you know, laying your shoulder work, you know, your dirt after they blacktop.
You use roller for a lot of things, too, you know.
Yeah.
But not only on blacktop.
Are you recommending that roller, that the town should buy that?
Is that the roller you want, or should we look a little further?
Don't we have a motion on the floor that we have to finish?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, made a motion on the broom with Mr. Peckham, I guess that's what...and it was seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now we can move on.
So, we had, that was a part of the discussion.
So, we're back on the roller thing.
Give me a couple of weeks on that.
Okay.
You know, you know, I just jumped in.
I understand that, man. I just wanted to make sure everybody else understood.
Yeah, and I don't want to lose, if it's a good deal, I don't want to lose it. A couple of weeks makes sense, if you think it was totally around it. We don't find anything else.
All right, just for the hang of it, um... In case you don't find one that is really, you know, I mean, if you're gonna buy one, you better, might as well buy one that we're gonna, you know, use for...
You can do it, yeah.
You know, we can use it for a few years, right?
That's right.
Okay, so, but if not, why don't we find out if, so that we can move on this project?
If you rent one.
If you could rent one. You know what I'm saying?
For now.
Yeah, for now, so I'll leave that up to you.
It'll cost us to run it, how long you're gonna have it, then you can wait.
I mean, yes, I know, I mean, that's all, exactly.
Then I, do we need to make a motion that he rents one, because it's something you're obviously gonna have to do?
I would make, I would make the motion that he looks and sees if he can rent one, and does the math.
Weigh it out.
Weigh it out, and if it means he can find one, or he can purchase cheaper, and he can rent one for what we're doing, do what you need to do to get the job done.
Second I motion.
I could probably rent that one. Actually, it's right there.
Well, that's fine. I just want to make sure that you don't have to come back to us to ask us to do something. That's why I made the motion away from there.
Yeah. No, if you can rent it, we'll...
It works.
So, the question, you know, how about we, we gotta have a little faith in somebody. How about we leave that up to your judgment? You've already seen what the thing is, the price that, check the rent if you want. Maybe he wants to rent that, or see what you can do. It ain't gotta be done tomorrow, but we want to go the most cost-effective way.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's what I'm...
Yeah.
That's what my motion was.
We got a motion to do that, right?
Yep.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
All right, very good.
Okay.
The brooms. What do you want to do there? You want to keep looking for used brooms? I was looking at a three-point hitch, something you just put on, plug in your PTO, it does angle.
Yeah, yeah.
It does reverse, but you actually have to physically change your gearbox to reverse it, so it's not a real easy job, but, you know, you can.
Just on the front of the tractor, the back?
To go on the front, the trouble is, we don't have a loader on anything, so now, you know, the fronts were quite a bit more expensive by the time you bought the pump, because the pumps on the tractor aren't enough to run the rollers, I mean, the broom. So, it was quite a bit more cost to put one on.
Would we ever put anything other than a broom on the front of a tractor?
Let me ask you a few... Can we put a broom on a hose? On the front of the hose? You've got three hoses.
Yeah, but...
That's a question.
We don't have quick hitches, though, and there again, you're gonna need a hydraulic pump somewhere along the line to run it.
I didn't know if they had one, right, you know, I didn't know if you could tap into her.
Yeah, you probably can.
I don't know if you can or not.
Well, if we had the IT on the, on any...
I think I'll leave that up to you. Listen, you used it once, it's free, who's it, so I'm just talking.
You know, one thing they told me about, about the front ones, is they throw a lot of dust, and boy, it's not real good on the motors versus, you know, sucking the dust of the air cleaning stuff versus the rear one. And, you know, let's face it, we don't really have a lot of intersections and stuff.
And bridge, and a couple bridges, you know, are a few bad, right?
So you can throw it on, do what you gotta do, unhook it, and it's...
Your call. You're the one, you and your, the people that work for you has got to know.
I guess, I guess that's...
We can keep looking around, too, I mean, that's... But we really should get...
Sweep these bridges off, I mean, right?
How many, how many years we been talking about getting a broom? I mean, that goes back before me.
Well, I think it's also important to look at, to...
Twenty years?
Our budget, I mean, we're possibly gonna purchase another truck. I think we need to look at the whole picture. I mean, I know, understand it's only five thousand dollars, but I'd like to have an understanding of what other purchases we're gonna do this year.
No, I think we need to...
With our equipment line, with our equipment line before we...
We need to sit down, yeah, and think about that, because we are gonna be short a truck. As far as old truck six they drove last year, needs a radiator, that's one of the ones with the cutouts in the front, expensive, it needs some spring work on the front. The worst thing is, you can open the hood and look right in and see the driver. What are you doing with that? It's an old six, twenty years old.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to put out the pasture. Stanley's truck, truck one, the one you put a lot of money into, I was gonna take that up to Gary and have him put a head gasket in it, and see if that was a problem, but we, you know, Gary talked to me, and he said, "Run it for a while, really see what it does yourself," and we really haven't had any problems with it, other than it does use a little antifreeze, maybe a half gallon a month. But we haven't really had any overheating issues with it, and I asked the guys, and so...
And months or an hour?
Yeah, a month.
Okay. I would live better out here, you know.
You've lived with that.
Me, too.
In the meantime, we're still, we're still short one, one big truck.
But we are short one.
Okay, all right, so we need to, we need to talk about that, and...
Definitely.
Okay.
And it's late to be talking about that, you know? To pull one together, I don't know.
Well, we, we need to talk about it, that's what we need to do.
Well, can we do that now, or we're looking to do that another time? I mean, I think, like you said, we're getting close to about the season here.
Yeah.
Can you come back in and...
Well, we have, we have a couple bids, but they're probably...
They're old now.
Well, they're old, but he said it...
We have two bids we haven't opened yet.
Yeah, but I wonder if you don't have to, well, that's all you got.
How many months ago?
It is better. He said he was gonna notify us.
Yeah, I saw that.
Right?
Yeah, I did see that.
Oh, yeah. He said they were good until he notified us, but remember, we wanted to give them back?
Yeah.
Right, and he said, "No, I'll notify you."
A year old, they oughta come down.
You do have a point.
So how many full-size, bigger trucks do we have?
Three?
Only three. Three operational?
Yeah.
And we got, what, three, three small trucks or two small trucks?
We got three.
You got three small ones?
Yeah.
And three larger ones?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean...
And how many of them have salters on them for winter? Well, you got the three large trucks, and...
Three bigger ones.
And one of the smaller ones.
And one of the smaller ones. Actually, the one-ton Chevy has a tailgate spreader, but that's not real swept.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's that little...
And meanwhile, and we have four routes.
Yeah, that was the thing, we do have four routes.
Well, you listed the bids, or you haven't yet?
No.
Nobody has.
Nobody, nobody has, no.
Okay. Well, I shouldn't have said the bids, the specs.
Yeah, what do you have?
That's what I'm...
Yeah.
Excuse me, okay.
But I don't know what specs he really bid on, I guess.
Okay, because a couple of things happened. We had, the bids that we got for a new one, we did not open. Then there was a discussion with one that was in his yard, Delores, am I correct on this?
Yes, still there.
Still there.
Still there.
So, and I don't know why it, you know, I don't know if it's lighter than the other one. I don't know if we ever got into it, did we? I don't remember. Do you remember? I don't remember. But we did...
It was a little bit bigger than we were looking at.
And also the...
It had a, it had a wing on it, it had some options that were a little bit above what we were, we were looking at.
The wing, I think, was the biggest problem, I guess, just because it made it probably eighteen inches longer or something.
Yeah, it made it longer and...
You know...
Yeah, I mean, it can only set so long if the price is...
Yeah, well, that's...
You're not worrying about the...
So, what would, what's...
Could get softer.
What is to say we can't open those bids tonight and know what, know what we're talking about for money? Try to give us an idea of what we're, what we're, you know, of other options.
I think, before you do that...
Okay.
I don't know if we have to put it all back out to bid, or...
Bids are quick.
Talk to them.
Did we table it, or did we, how did we do that?
We tabled it until we hired a new road foreman.
We tabled it until we...
We tabled it, then we can bring it right back out. But if we didn't, then I'd be a little more cautious.
We only had, we only had one company bid, Delores' bid, an older truck and a truck that was in inventory.
That's right.
We would have to move to a table. I guess my, my concern is, is I don't see us doing it tonight for a couple of reasons.
Yeah.
One of them is, you know, I'd like you, I'd like, look for it a little more, and on top of that, I would, I would like to notify the guy that bids, so he could be here when we open this, because he was here before, and I think that's only courtesy for us to do that.
And he was, and they were, and he was excellent, I mean, as far as, you know, saying, "Hey, fellas," you know.
Yeah, so I wouldn't want to say that we open them up tonight, and all of a sudden we decide no, and he reads it in the paper, or we say yes, and...
Let's go on our, let's take a look at our, where we stand, and why don't you do a little research on it, and tell us what would fit.
And you might even go over there and look at it.
I don't, right.
Yeah. You know, there's, there's a few more steps to take before we make a decision.
Yeah.
Well, it isn't an unlimited money supply.
Right.
As far as I know, there isn't.
We got your account number.
Well, anyway, get back to each truck.
Okay.
The one Casey had was, well, they might say it's new.
Yeah.
And you got any miles or hours on it, whatever you, how you're calculating. And the one that Chris was driving was the one that needs the radiator?
Well, yeah, the one actually, Stanley ended, ended up driving the older one.
Yeah, Stanley was driving, it was giving problems before.
It was one stony.
I'm almost tempted, you know, to try to fix that truck.
You're confused.
Maybe I am. I got dazed and confused.
No, we're talking about two different trucks. In the end, we took this old truck, and we put Stanley in it. We switched them out.
It may be in the end. He had this other truck before.
That's right. He's saying that they haven't had any problems with it.
Well, yeah, well, that one's been doing all right so far.
Well, let's, let's just get back to where we are.
To the old, old one?
No. How many actual trucks do we have?
Three.
We only got fifty-some miles on the dirt road. Seventy-two, I think, are total. And I don't care if we got, you know, if you got four routes, I think you could make three routes. You have to make one a little longer, or two. That's all I'm saying, if we, this, I'm looking at this, this big money expense, you know? I mean, they threw numbers around before. We spent a lot of money for that other one, and we haven't even used it.
It's been being used. It's...
Being used now.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, which it should be.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that truck right there was, when it was all done and equipped up, was around a hundred and seventy.
I saw this.
With the body and all that stuff. That's real money. Considering, I mean, we're just saying, "Oh, we're gonna do this, gonna do this, gonna do this," well, taxpayer's gonna have to drill the salt shed, we do this, do that. We got money coming out our ears. But what I, the point I was trying to get at was this, how many guys did we have working there last year? Four guys?
Yeah, well...
Four full-time people?
You have...
Some part-time.
Four full-time people in the big trucks, and on a big, on a big store.
So, in other words, one of them big trucks is eliminated. Which one was that?
The old one.
The green one?
No, no, the green one, actually, they rebuilt the motor and that. We use it for calcium chloride.
Yeah, but you don't use it for that in the winter.
It's taken its toll, the calcium is in it.
But it's been that truck for a while, the calcium truck for quite a while now. Few years, right?
We haven't really used that, and I don't think they used it last year.
We had four trucks not caught in the green one that we used in the winter?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
You got it.
They used to use the green one in the winter.
I know they did.
But it needs...
That's what I'm saying, I mean, these, you ain't going over these roads forty miles an hour. If you did, you'd have them all done in fifteen minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
You're going over them kind of slow and easy.
But it's...
Which is fine. I got no problem with that.
The thing you have today, Ronnie, is DOT and stuff is out there, and boy, you can't be running, you know, the days of the footstone trucks where you're dragging your feet to stop, or, you know what I mean? The floorboards are bad, the old sects of floorboards are really bad in it. You get in a lot of trouble, boy, you're getting in an accident or something with them. A lot, a lot of trouble, that's our worst.
I think, I think, really, I think, you see what, you, this is what I think, you see where we stand?
Yeah.
And I think it's up to us to take a look and, um, talk to Jingle, you know?
Yep.
Try to figure out where we stand, okay? And then we get back together and, well, and say, hey, listen, if this can happen... And if it really needs to happen, or, well, I don't know, I'll just say it, okay?
Yeah.
Well, let's take it even a step farther, because I agree with Ronnie, and someone is here that don't often, but once in a while we do. There's a lot of money we're talking about here.
You got it right.
And we should explore our options. And if it means all we have is three trucks, what does that mean? Does that mean we have to put on another person with a small truck more often? You know, what, what does it really mean to get our roads ready for people to drive on? And, you know, cost-wise, if we didn't have another truck?
Means the guys doing the roads are gonna be out there longer to do them.
Yeah, and, you know, there are other, I mean, you could maybe find a real super good use truck, you know, to cut it in half, or, you know, I don't know. It all depends on how much money this town wants to spend.
But I'm against putting money into old, into junk.
Into junk.
I thought we had, I thought we were all in agreement, now we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna be looking at doing that.
No, I think that if you say...
Nobody said to fix any junk, I was just trying to see how many trucks we had that were actually usable.
That's right.
If we got.
Three big trucks.
We got three that are usable.
And then what I heard was you got three big homes.
Yeah.
So, you got a total of six trucks, and all of them have lawns?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, what does it mean? How long does it take us to open up the roads with that many trucks on the road? You know, I know if we have a severe storm, then it's those small trucks.
But, you know, you have it greater too, you know, they've got, you know, they've got...
Going and going and going, I mean, yeah.
You're right.
I think that...
Can you can't run guys around the block, either like you used to, you know?
That's right. No, I think that, I think that we can do a couple of different things here.
Can't you finance instead of just...
Sure, we talked about that.
But I think that, if we don't know what we're talking about for a new truck...
Well, that's where we gotta...
That's the first thing. First thing we gotta figure out is where we're going, what we need.
Yeah, that's the key, what do we need?
And then, you know, we'll figure out how we're gonna, gonna get that.
And that's why I kinda love it.
I thought you did that already.
I didn't want to...
And we put it out, we wrote a spec, we put it out, we've done all this work, I mean...
We had a foreman before that had a plan, and he felt he needed another truck. What I'm asking is our new foreman to come up with a plan, is what I think, and see what he says, and comes back with. It could be identical, it could be different. Well, let's give him a chance to find out what he needs, and look at what has been offered before, and maybe, maybe he can come up with something different. Versus us saying, hey, the plans are made, this is what you're gonna do.
But we're not saying that, I'm just saying, if we don't know how much, if we don't know how much this truck, this demo they have over there right now, if we don't know how much that truck is, how can we make that decision also?
It might be less than what we spent on it.
Of course, sure, and I don't think...
But I'm saying the plan first has to say we even need that truck. That's where I'm at.
That's what, yeah.
You know, tell me that, and then I'm with you, let's go see what it really means, the cost, and then let's figure out how we're gonna spend it if we have to, and...
Well, let's table it anyhow.
Sure.
Give you a chance to go look and decide, yeah.
Yeah, and just see.
Didn't you have a chance to drive that truck? It was around town here for a while.
Actually, Al brought it down, I didn't see it.
The fellas did drive that truck, right?
They did, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't, but I did look at it.
That's right.
Yeah. You know...
I didn't see it, so I don't...
You're really, on a lot of these jobs, oh, like going around with Peckham's guy, a lot of times, the towns will get together and, you know, haul stone, like they're doing a coal mix...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To set up a pug mill, like up on Burrington Road, say. And you can haul your own stone up there and pile it and leave it set. And the towns do, a lot of times, get together, and they all help each other, and we really can't, because it's just not cost-effective with a single ax.
No, that, you're right, yeah, right. You can't haul that seven yards, or, say, eight, seven, right? No, I agree.
Well, all right, I guess we beat that horse to death. Let's get on to the Better Backroads grant agreement there, what's your story with that? On their, on the agenda there, after the Blacktop bid, I mean, we're talking about the road cost.
This is the one we have to move to sign, aren't you?
That's the one you have to sign, yeah.
Is there with a culvert study and so forth?
Yeah, to update culvert, and this, this is one we're putting in for? We'd already got this one? Is this the one we'd already got granted?
We submitted five applications, we were awarded one of them, which was that one.
And we have to sign to take it?
Yeah.
I move we sign.
Second.
I was in favor of saying aye.
Aye. I want to take any money they want to give us.
It has to be completed by when?
Yesterday.
The end of this, end of next year.
Yeah, that was, yes.
End of next year.
Yeah, it says right down, 2018.
All right. Now, if we get up to speed on that, I guess maybe that'd be something you could tell us, Jerry, what's the deal?
No, no, it is?
All the paperwork for that?
This is for the fifty-two?
The one that's gonna be poured in place.
Yeah, the B fifty-two and B thirty-two.
Fifty-two.
Did you distribute, did everyone have a copy of this?
The summary.
Okay. We looked through the files, and Linda, Joel, and I, and this is, this is kind of what we came up with, unless someone else has other information. The, the engineer had given an email on the fifteenth of last year, saying that they would, they would give you a contract that would be done in two to three weeks. And that contract was signed the twenty-fifth, and to make a long story short, today, as near as I can tell, we don't have the, they haven't delivered on the, the contract, even though they've been paid for probably all but two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So, this is, this is just an attempt to try to document the, what we found.
No specs, we had a set of plans, but no...
Right.
No specs.
If you have a copy, did you give them a copy of this?
I just have a single, chief.
The email?
No, they said we'd bring something with you here tonight, we just have the summary.
Okay. The, in the file and the email, they said they were gonna have clear detail, so the concrete contractor could use it, be able to construct, construct the culvert. But all they have is a schematic sketch, it doesn't show rebar, doesn't show dimensions, doesn't show any of the stuff that we need to put it out to bid. So, they... So, that's kind of where it stands, we're, I guess, different ones.
Have you contacted them since you got that email that doesn't have all that stuff in it?
No, I just, we just completed this, and I guess, Ron, you've talked to them some, and they've, there's been some conversations back and forth.
Some months ago, right, Ron?
Yeah, and they said it would be within a week, when I talked to them on the phone, it's been at least a month. I mean, 'cause he said it was all, it was all set, they just had to ship it out. I see where, I thought that that had already came in, but apparently it hasn't, no. You gotta have that to get this thing moving, don't do anything on it, if there's a high water comes.
And ideally, they'll send us electronic copies, so we can make our own copies and put it out to bid, but the problem is, we don't have the detail. And so, you know, there's, I don't know what the options are, in the twenty-fifth of this month, it'll be a year, you know, see if they'll...
We have nothing to show for it, except for the basics.
Just the basics. And there, honestly, there's not a week's worth, you know, not a lot of work there. I would ask them for, either to produce, you know, what they said they would on the, on the contract, or, you know, see if, I mean, that'd be the best, if they would just produce what they said, because they've already been paid.
Have you spoken to them?
No, I, yeah, they don't...
They don't, I tried to email them, they don't, the only one that gets through to them is Ron.
You might want to, I'm just throwing this out, you might want to send some kind of official letter saying, Ron, or somebody, you, probably you, is their official designated person, and you need to respond to this person. You know, 'cause they might say, well, we don't know who we're talking to, you know, I'm just trying to think about...
Yeah, we need to be follow-up.
Yeah.
And that, something that's official, but I would ask, also encourage you to make something, say, look, we need, and I don't know what action you can take, other than ask for your retainer bag, or, there's not twelve thousand dollars worth of work that they, the new sheets that we have in the file, so... I don't know what other options.
And we're still, so, and we're, at the point we are now, we can't do it this year anyhow, so now we're still, plus we had one more year to...
When does the, is that the one we have the grant on?
Yeah.
When does it run out?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, December.
Twenty-seventh.
December seventeen. We still, we got time, but that isn't the point, I'm talking about this year.
Yeah, I agree with you, I just don't want to lose it.
Yeah, we want to get moving and get it permitted.
Get it out to bid.
Yeah, if we put it here in the fall, then it could be ready to go in the spring, and...
That's what I'm thinking.
So...
And in the fall is when people give you a better bid, because the front line of work for next year is...
I would think, you know, this would have been the perfect summer to do this job. It's been dry.
So, just clarify for me, if they don't do this, we have to start all over again, and we bid it and everything else?
Well, I talked to a local engineer, and, you know, we could get prices to, you know, put enough information on there to, to bid it. And that'd be unfortunate to have to do that.
But we've paid for this.
That's the thing, and I think before we did that, if this fella doesn't give us any satisfaction, and give us what we paid for, maybe we call the Secretary of State and just say, hey, you know...
Labor board.
We were taking for such and such a money, yeah. And we got nothing in return, and...
Isn't that a bit right, or something?
You might want to, you might want to take these, up to these options, you might want to take that and show, you know, give it to them, give it to the, send this to them and say, these are fine, this is what we understand. And then make sure you designate someone that they can respond to.
Okay. Henry brought up a good point, too. Bill, is there a person in the state that a town like ours would go to when a bid, when we're dealing with a company like this, that doesn't seem to provide stuff, that they said they were going to? Does it have an agency?
Probably, there might be several, and I would try to think that through, because obviously, it's a contract situation, and you're basically saying you're coming up on breach of contract.
Yep.
So, that could well be the advice you get, it might be the Attorney General, it might be the Secretary of State. But I think, you know, when you've gone through whatever preliminary steps that you want, you know, just let me know, and I won't try to get ahead of the curve on this, but just let me know, and I will very happily assist anybody in any way you'd like to do that.
Yeah, well, what I'm thinking is, is that, you know, we sent a formal letter requesting information, or else we'll have to take some sort of action, which might be a point, you know, referring them to the Attorney General, or whatever, what we have to. But what I think, we need to be firm in saying, hey, look, we've been patient, write down what the dates will be, but put down some of the history like you've done.
Well, yeah.
This is all documented here.
But I'd put that right in the letter and say, hey, and here's where we are.
August thirteenth, twenty fifteen, I mean, come on, we should have had...
But, but this provides them, this provides them with a history log, and then a statement that basically says...
No, 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 I'm sorry. No, you're right.
That basically says, a statement that the work hasn't been completed to date, and you continue to promise, and we're at the point where we need to go to bid, and because of your lack of services, we're gonna have to take some sort of action. I don't care if you use the word legal action, or what you take, but you're gonna have to say something that you're gonna do, and see if they respond to it. But I do agree also that we should have a person of contact, you know?
Officially establish that, again, like they didn't know, you know?
So, so they know who to call, and that same person has this...
They actually had three people they were dealing with, you, myself...
Well, they never know.
Well, the slug board signed the contract. What I would say is, is that you need to point one person to be the, be the contact. I truly believe that Joel is the person that's gotta put this out to bid, and you can work with Jerry on it, but I think you're probably gonna be the contact, because you have to know what they're providing you, and you can say to Jerry, is this right or wrong? You know, simply because he's an employee of the town, you're a contract under the town. And write the letter and say, contact this person.
Well, main thing is, is we want to work this out, I mean, if it's possible, right? It's the bottom line to...
That's your advice.
Till it's getting dragging, you know, get moving.
Well, think of what you're gonna write, you're gonna say, the board of selectmen has been informed of the history of this project, and due to our timetable, what we thought this was gonna be done, the lack of your performance has created a problem. I'd have to, I'm thinking and talking, but do it formal enough, that then you can show them the history and where the action would be, and we wish that you will contact law, whoever we want, and give them the phone number and email, whatever, and this is the information we need. If you don't get a response to that, then you can take legal action, what you need to do.
Well, I think, Bill, I agree that you would help them.
The road boss should do that.
Right.
And then, but also, Bill could be very instrumental in telling us who we can contact other than a lawyer.
That, that, oh, I don't...
That's what I'm saying.
I don't want a lawyer.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. But our first three attorneys are not lawyers.
It's also out of the hands of...
But what I say is, I think you're on the right track, is the steps you want to take is notification, opportunity for the other person to respond or to cure, and a solution, and then you probably want advice on what are the steps. I'm sure this has happened before in a lot of places, I can well imagine there are resources, even the League of Cities and Towns, might well say, when towns are in this position, you know, here are some particular steps as well, and, you know, you basically repay them a fair amount of money for these services. So, I think that's a very good resource, too.
Good.
It is, actually.
I just know that we can't just do nothing any longer. I mean, you know, I appreciate you, you know, welcome, no, but, you know, get involved here and help guide us to some kind of a direction. Very good.
So, are you gonna draft something, or you want me to draft something with you, or what do you want?
Yeah, you can, I actually like what you have written here.
All right, and then I'll just do what they said here, and run it by you and Linda.
Okay, and just send a copy to the board of what you're gonna send out, so we have a copy of it. Yeah.
We'll try to get something out tomorrow, because, and then say the twenty-fifth, does that sound reasonable, say by then we won't have contact general, give me, and here's what we need, okay?
Yeah, that to me...
You know, a couple of weeks will buy again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where are we at, Mr. Chairman?
That was B fifty-two.
That was B fifty-two, and...
That was a bomb. I said there was a bomb out there.
And that's the one we do have money for, so we want to move on that.
That's right.
Yes.
And so, the sequence is a fall bid, and then a spring construct?
Unless miraculously, we can pull it off and do it this year.
It'd be quick to do that, get the bid out.
Okay, so we'll still try for, okay.
To get one, they have to stop working in Brooks, if there's a timetable.
Oh, boy.
October.
October.
Yeah, October is, I mean, if things hold on like this, there'll be no water, so certainly won't have no wet.
So, if we got something by the twenty-fifth, and put it out to bid by the fifteenth, yeah, they're gonna have fifteen days to work on.
I don't think it's gonna work.
No.
That's why we're gonna end up in the next year, but, but it much pressure?
Well, let's just...
All right.
All right, moving on.
B thirty-two is...
B thirty-two, that was the Snake Hill thing, which, we didn't actually do nothing, they were gonna, they wanted to, that same outfit wanted to, wanted to know if we wanted to proceed further. Well, we're not gonna give them any more money, we ain't gonna, we ain't gonna satisfy them for the first one.
So, B thirty-two is a little over twelve, we're gonna scratch that at this point.
We're gonna have to scratch it.
B thirty-two, I believe, was the other culvert I'm on, Anthony.
The first one, lower one.
Yeah, the lower one, that's that.
I don't want to do anything more of these guys until they come through with the lease.
Also, one thing, not to interrupt you, but Shelley Styles sent me an email, they have funding for a hydro seeder.
Okay.
And she's trying to get a bunch of the towns together, and she said, probably you could get it for nothing if we all got together, create money. Bennington wanted to do it, she's waiting on Chasbury, but there was a few of them around, and share it if we needed it.
Okay.
So, she's, I told her, yeah, we'd be interested.
Yeah, definitely.
So, she's gonna move on that, I guess, and she just gotta wait for Chasbury, and gonna have a meeting of road foremans and discuss it and see what we're... Right, because of this, all these new laws, you're gonna need it, you can't just, you know...
Wait for the grown actual.
Yeah.
Not anymore.
Okay.
Okay. And we had proposed discontinued roads.
So, are we also going to...
Oh, the salt shed, I don't even see it there, must be there somewhere. Why is the salt shed coming, Jerry?
I think, here's a...
I heard the truck's air brakes come on down there in North Hall.
Pass them around. You got one?
Yep.
Anyone have one?
You're gonna take that, go to you, don't it?
You got two?
I think I got two there.
One for your left eye, one for your right.
Got two hands on you?
It begins, they demoed the building in eight minutes, I have it on video, if you want to see it, look at my website, AJ Frye. The, actually, that's, that's not the walls, that's just the wood part, yeah. The... The, um, I met with Neil and Breen's representative, Kim Lemmons, Levens, and Joel on Friday then, and to review the benchmark. They're going to set the, set up the finished floor a little bit six inches above the existing shed, maintenance shack. And then Friday, we had the engineer over and met with him and reviewed the plan to test the area that was filled, where we set up the contract or the bid. From the time that we initially started the project, the process of bidding, until we got out there on the site, they had excavated some of the area that was going to be used for the foundation. And so in talking with Cotrell and the other guys, and Kurtz, who were looking to bid on it, we did an addendum to cover, then bringing in soils that are on site and compacting it, and we put in a five hundred dollar allowance to test that, to make sure that that was going to bear the, the foundation. The, um, yeah. They, Josh did all that work in the back end there and tested it, and his part was good, but they looked at the trenches, and maybe Joel can speak up here, the trenches where the footings are going to go, and there's pictures here on the second page. If you look at this top picture, on the right-hand side of one leg and the left-hand side of the other leg, up in the areas where they were going to put those footings, they noticed that there was, after they had taken away the building and excavated, that that, those soils may not be good for putting these footings on, so they went ahead and tested, and in fact, they weren't, the soils weren't good there. And so Joel and, I don't know, did you get in that conversation ahead of time or answered the fact?
No.
Okay. We talked to Joel, and Josh Kurtz indicated that it would cost about a thousand dollars to pull out that existing material that wasn't compactable, bring in the, bring in new stuff. And he told me and Joel that it'd be around a thousand dollars. And so we went ahead and gave him the okay to do that. He's.
No, Jerry.
I did.
Back up.
Okay, go ahead.
I didn't give him the okay to do that. I told him I couldn't do it. We talked to these folks here, and, no, I didn't. Matter of fact, I didn't even know it was going to cost a thousand dollars.
Okay.
I know we talked about between five hundred and eight and this and that, but that was on the first one. He wanted to dig some out on the, on the first one, for some reason, you know, when he first started, and then he figured out where it was going to go, and they figured he didn't need to do it. But in, well, he was a nice guy. He did, he did a good job. I mean, I guess, he didn't do the job as good as it should had, apparently, or he didn't let things over as, you know, good as should. But I, I think Nelson has a good idea on that, rather than just say, you know, no, and, um, we're not going to give it to him.
I think, I think what we should do is continue on with the project. This is, this is something that's, to me, looks like a work change order or something to that nature. And what we need to do is, is at the end of the project, look at and see what those are, and review them at that time. I don't think we should be making decisions on every one of these that comes up at that instant, is where I'm at, because who knows where the, where the project is. There was a bid that came in. They said it was going to be this price. I now see where people are finding some things that maybe was due to the fact that they couldn't see what they saw once they got digging.
Right.
And I'm willing to listen to all that. I'm just not, at this stage of the game, we just started this project, and I already see someone saying, whoops, here you go, I want to charge you a little more for this, and next week, what's going to be the next thing? I want, I want to get to know this guy a little better.
Well, I think what, what you'll find is this, probably, that's the only thing that was possibly undetermined. I'm not saying we weren't running out of other things.
We're only starting. We haven't poured the footing yet, Jerry. I mean, there might be a lot, like Nelson said. Why don't we wait until the project's done?
Right.
And then, then you're going to have the project cost. You're going to have all your change orders. Come on, at this point, somebody's approved this change order.
Right.
And it's done.
Well, if I, I guess, this is, this is new to me as far as, you know, working with a town like this. We could have stopped the project, which I didn't think was wise to do. They gave us numbers to, to deal with what was unforeseen, and, and we, we had, we had set this bid up so that that was, everyone was bidding on the same thing.
I, well, sometimes they bid in contingency, some bidders do, that says a contingency in case they run into problems like this.
Right.
And, and that's.
We didn't, we presented it, the way we presented it on the site was that the, we didn't know it was there, and we told them nothing, you know. I didn't present it as you, you cover what you think you're going to cover. We presented it so they could bid on it and have that money, that five hundred dollars in there to cover testing, and there, we didn't, we could have said, include ten thousand dollars, or five thousand, or two thousand for unforeseen things, but we didn't do that. So there's different ways of approaching it. So the only concern I have is, these guys had themselves, you know, pretty wound up about having additional costs that were, they thought were mis, you know, mispresented. They weren't.
How do you know they didn't do that? My question is, and my question is, I think some of this, Jerry, is an opinion. I mean, and without getting into all the details, obviously, there's, there's a proper way of compaction, and if one person feels it wasn't done properly, meaning our engineer is insinuating that it wasn't done to his likings, and possibly that's the reason why it didn't compact, then I don't think we're, personally, I don't think we're liable to pay for that.
Well, but that's not what happened. Everything that Josh compacted, tested out. What he didn't compact, what he found, what he exposed, when they tested that, that didn't meet it. So then, when we, when we went ahead and said, go ahead and make it work, because you want the footing to be correct, that worked. So the, the engineer said, you know, I would have rather you do this. Everything Josh did, tested out. So, you know, there's different opinions on how to do stuff, but everything he, he did, tested out. So that's my concern, is a lot of people talk behind the scenes and stuff. I really don't want you talking about stuff you don't.
Right, but I also don't want, I also want to come out that it was approved, because nobody approved, just, and, you know.
I approved the go-ahead. We could have stopped it.
Okay.
So what, what they advised, what Neil and Breen advised, was what we did, is we took out the bad stuff. He compacted it and tested it. So.
And I, personally, I don't have any problem with all the steps that's been taken. I get back to, I've got a contractor that's working with me for the first time.
Yep.
He's been in it a week, and already, he's got a change order that's costing me a thousand dollars.
Right.
And it might be, and I'm, I'm with you.
Right.
You said it's needed, then it was needed.
Right.
But let's continue on with this project and see where it is, and then, you know, and we write the check at the time we write the check.
Well, at the end of it, it's all going to, it's just one month, some at the end anyway, so the, do you want the project to stop, or are they supposed to proceed? In other words, is there a chance you won't pay them for work that we assign them to go ahead on? Because now's the time, you know.
I guess.
Let me ask you this. Do you think that that outfit wants to go ahead and pick up their tools for a thousand bucks on a hundred and eight thousand dollar job? I don't think so.
No, no.
Okay, so come on. Now, I think Nelson said it all.
I just don't, I just don't, what I found on the jobside the other day was people talking about stuff they didn't know anything about.
Well, okay, no.
And I've worked with these guys on many projects, and they, they're reputable, so.
I'm going to say it differently.
You tell me how to proceed from here.
I'll tell you what I think. I think that they trust us, and we'll trust them. So, very good. Keep working.
Yeah, I.
I mean it that way, too.
But the question is being asked, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is who makes the decision to tell them to go ahead?
Right.
And I think, I think this board voted to give you the authority in the contract.
I know the answer. He does.
So, and you did your job.
And you did your job. Thank you.
And I'm saying that's okay. I'm just, I'm trying to get a feel of the total project of the people working and the rest. And I don't, and at this point, I see no reason not to pay them at the end of the job, Jerry. That's not my, that's not my thing.
Here's, here's the other thing I want to bring out, is he, he talked about, because he didn't know how long it was going to take him, but you can see what he did. He rented a roller for a day. He shows all the breakdown.
Yes.
And then, because he had talked to us and talked about the maximum being a thousand, even though it, it cost him more than that, or, you know, his, the way he would normally bill out, he, he deducted three sixty.
And that's.
In, in good faith. So again, I just want you guys to.
In hindsight, I really wouldn't have thought the guy had left the roller there and stopped an extra day, because they came, what, when he finished, they came at four o'clock that afternoon and did the first compaction.
Yeah. And again, it was all moving so fast. They were, what they're trying to do is, is get,
One job done, book for the next.
Well, no, not, not just that. They're trying to do a good job and keep, you know, not keeping an extra day to charge an extra fee, that type of thing, so. But again, if you have questions, ask me, because I've worked with these guys before. They're good people.
And I'm sure they are.
Yeah.
I'm not, no.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that either. I'm just, I'm just surprised that we had a change work order for the footings. We haven't even started putting some on top of the ground yet.
Right. That's the only place you're going to probably have it, because it was not exposed. In other words, they would have had to, they would have had to, we told them not to put money in for stuff they couldn't see. In other words, that's the way we presented it. And so they did that. Now, not everyone, a lot of guys struggle in bidding, and they, you know.
Well, that, and again, what I see is when people bid for things they can't see, like they, they had that contingency, or that, because they know. I don't know what, what they were, to go over there and bid on a salt shed.
Right.
But if they felt, oh, I can't see, there might be something under the ground here, they could have said that and then put something in contingency. Now, they didn't.
They didn't ask them to do that. The other thing is, if it was rock, if they would hit rock, it's the same thing, then we would have had to get a price and deal with the rock that they couldn't see. So that's what it is. So it's.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm just.
I just want to make sure.
I'm just talking, the fact and contractual type agreements for things like that. Maybe next time, we're, we're going to ask the people that bid, you know, not to exceed, maybe, if that's where you want to be, or you have a contingency.
We could have said, include two thousand dollars for unforeseen stuff.
Yes.
That would have been a way to approach it, but, but we didn't do that. We, we just said, here's what you see, and we put in money for testing.
Yeah, and, and part of this is educating us in what we might do.
All of us, me too.
What we might do next time.
Right.
So, and again, I'm not saying that this is, is not something that's payable, because from what I've seen and what I've heard, I think it is.
I want to hear what you're watching.
I'm just saying you wait until the end of the project, and you add it on, and you do your thing. You pay the payment, you know?
Yeah, and it's moving pretty fast. They're going to, on here, they're going to finish the rebar tomorrow, and they hope to pour on Monday, if, you know, weather and everything, and they'll be all, you know, they, they want to.
So first, they left the spec done, Jerry.
Pardon?
Is that what you're saying? They got this up to spec, anyway.
Yes.
Now, they got the rebar, and everybody pictures.
The engineer's going to come by on Monday, or Friday. He's going to call them, I forget when he said, and get them to look at that. He wanted to see that before he signed off on that, so.
Yeah, okay. That's good.
If it's up to spec, and I mean, I can understand something that you couldn't see.
That's right.
That's, I mean, if that happens right through the project right along, well, anything else, I would be awfully concerned. But if it is something on the ground, you know? People dig in the ground, sometimes they hit water.
I mean, you know.
So we're good.
Well, you're going to take a look at the long, the long, the long shot here, the whole project. You know, all of a sudden, they may have a mistake, and, and they'll have to reimburse us.
Oh, no?
We can hope.
I'll try to. I mean, all these things can happen, so, you know, I mean, there's a lot of.
Drop on top of our.
No, but I, I think you're doing, I have no problem. I think you're doing a good job.
I'll try to get you recorded on your Thursday nights, but last week was crazy, because everything was happening.
Right. It's okay. It's good.
We haven't met in a couple weeks, anyway, so this is our first meeting.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Very good.
So there, that picks this up.
So we're done with our road foreman?
No, let's do the roads, the discontinued roads with the road foreman here.
Oh, yeah, they did. I want to get rid of your road, right?
No, we're not getting rid of my road. I'm going to stand out there with a banner.
I'm going to banister hill.
I want to clear that.
We'll never have to worry about that running down again.
Be sitting on the ditch.
I'll try to see some more.
Have you seen the list that we talked about?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I keep bringing up every time.
Jerry, we'll get together tomorrow. I'll get you something, okay?
Yeah.
So Jerry, one question before you leave, so I understand, so I'm being instructed to process this invoice.
Not now.
No.
At the end of the project.
At the end of the project, yeah.
And I'll just let them know that, so they know what's going on.
Yeah, it's not that it's not being processed, but it's going to be processed with the last of the funds.
That's fine. I'll try.
And that's, that's what they expect, I think. Okay.
I'll try.
So, if you have a chance, Joel, to look at any of them, that list of.
I did, back a while ago. I don't know if I remember what's on it now, or I know something that's on it.
Well, which, I guess where I'm at is, you know, we keep talking about discontinuing, and I also talk about adding some. There's some people out there that have asked us in the past to add their road. I think we should look and see whether we should be adding some roads, not just discontinuing them. And I, and I would like you to look at that list that was made by the previous foreman for discontinuance, and have you make a recommendation on whether all of them should be, or if there's some of them that shouldn't be.
That's right.
And if you think there's something that should be added, that we haven't added in the past, I'd like to hear that, too.
What you're, what you're asking for is, if, both, on both sides of the story here.
That's right.
Right? Okay, very good.
Because there are people that have been in here, and if there's anybody out there listening that thinks their road should be, leave, leave it, your name here with us, with what road it is, so Joel can look at.
And then we'll take the next steps at another meeting, right?
And again, I've asked already, and I think I'd like to reiterate, I'd like to know what we're going to lose in revenue from the state and from taxes, when we, when we discontinue these roads.
I asked the question on the roads, and the way, whether it was a town road or not a town road, and the way that they're done today, the formula they use, it won't make a bit of difference. There's a road going by a house and servicing a house, the formula has a number that they put in, and if it doesn't have a road, if it's, you know, somewhere where it isn't, then it's got a different formula.
Okay.
But there's, there's like four different grades, and basically, the way it is now, that road goes by, whether it's private or not private, it's the same.
Okay, on taxes. So what about in state revenue?
They pay by distance, based on the type of road, and I don't know what the formula is.
I don't, because we don't, we don't ever see that those monies come directly to the treasurer electronically.
And what I'm looking at is, is if you, you're talking about some very short roads here, that you're talking about discontinuing, and we might discontinue a mile of road, and we might end up adding a mile and a half.
Would you, how much road was it you said?
Total.
Two, two miles or something? Didn't you figure it out?
I had it figured out, but I don't have that paper with me.
Yeah, we don't have the information with us tonight.
But say it's a couple miles, and if you go look out there, you know, one of the roads I think of is about a quarter mile long, you know? So, so I'm saying, you might find it before, you're just doing a wash here, and you're, and you're providing service to many more people than what you're providing it to now.
So that's two, yeah.
Another one, so it's about almost three point five miles.
No.
We got two, two miles of class.
If you're on a town highway.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we have two percenters.
Two point, uh, two eight class fourth, which I don't think we get much of that.
Nope.
And, uh, that's what we have. And some of these are, I mean, nine tenths, eight tenths. Uh, they're, you know, they're, they're very, very short.
And some of them actually turn, right? They get, they go up as a class three, and then they turn to either a trail or a class four. So what we're talking about discontinuing, what we take care of, is just a small section of that road. And one of the things that I would have you look at also is, maybe we should be converting these things to a trail, or all to class four all the way, whether seasonally maintained, so that we're not really doing...
Getting rid of them.
Getting rid of it and turning the property over. What we're really doing is, is taking and changing the classification of a road.
And we're not maintaining them anymore?
That class four is seasonal. You don't have to do it in the winter, see?
Yeah, turn it into a class four after first of months, huh?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're gonna come in. I think that beats us abandoning roads, because, look, in the past, we know. We've done some of that. The next thing we know, we wanna get somewhere, and we gave the road on.
Yeah.
We can't do that.
Well, okay.
But you, you do pay to be out of town road. I mean, you know, taxes are...
The value of your road.
Raiders there somewhere.
No, he's saying no. He's saying no.
No, they're not there, no tax for that.
It used to years ago be a point five.
I think if you're on a blacktop road, it's more than, if you're on a dirt road, isn't it?
I talked to a listener today, she showed me some things, because I talked about private and non-private, and the assessment's the same.
But blacktop and gravel is different?
Yeah, I didn't ask for that question.
That's right, that is, but that, that, usually, they're talking there like a driveway. Of course, in blacktops, you're driveway, yes, it's worth more than a dirt driveway.
No, I thought it...
The blacktop runs in front of your house, and houses more, your, your value is, is higher than gravel.
I think you're right, yeah.
But those are the things that you have to look at, and the, and the, I just don't think the town should be abandoning roads, which is a different...
We're not gonna abandon your road.
Thank you.
We might, we might discontinue.
I'm trying to stay on my good side, aren't you?
We might discontinue.
I'm sorry, I said it wrong.
Well, you have to do it seasonal. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Joel, for coming in.
Okay, very good.
I'll ma, I'll make a motion if we point Sue clerk, so we don't forget.
Oh, second, second.
That's right.
All right, right?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
All right, call his favor, say aye.
Aye. Grab that pen.
I'm not sure what that all means, but I'm sure you'll tell me.
Well, I thought we did that already.
We will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Put in your handbook, feel like it.
I did.
We might've just talked about it.
Okay. Okay, so where were you at?
Okay.
New business, Mr. Scully.
Mr. Scully?
We're on to Mr. Scully with his net metering.
You may wanna wait, uh, you may wanna do it in executive, to do the contract stuff. Some of it I probably shouldn't discuss.
Out and hill.
It's gonna involve the...
Well, we got a, we got a personnel.
This is, this is the hydro project. I have one quest, I have one question on the hydro product, project. Just to fill you in a little bit, on behalf of the fire department, last couple of years, they've been looking at some grants to do water supply for the village of North Ponnell.
Dry hydrant.
A dry hydrant type of setup. We're wondering if that could be, anyway, incorporated into your project.
I don't mind, but we wanna get on that real soon.
Okay.
So you know where we're at, Joel?
Yeah, I mean, we're at the final design stages for the things with that, where you might...
And I don't know if you're familiar, familiar with how that type of a setup works, but if we have...
Yeah, we were talking to Bennington about doing one, actually not at the Bennington plant, but on the island in the center.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm marginally familiar.
So maybe we could set up a time, and a couple guys could speak with you?
Yeah, we can give them my number or something like that. I'd be happy to talk them about it.
Terrific, thank you.
And, and the other thing, before we go into the executive session, I know you said a little bit earlier about it. People out there are real interested in how the project's moving and, and what stage we're at, and when we can actually see things going along, and I, and I think it would be nice if we did that to the public, and then, when we talk about contracts, we'll go into that.
Absolutely.
If the board's in agreement, I just think...
I agree with that.
Is that all right with you guys? So we are, we were awarded a contract, the turbine's being engineered. We are in the final stages of doing the interconnection agreement with Green Mountain Power. Those are the broad strokes. Our local legislators have been incredibly helpful in the last section in getting the rules and laws to work very, to work well for us, really just maintaining the status quo. There was a lot of attention on solar, which is, I don't wanna say largely unregulated, but not as well regulated as hydro, which has been regulated very well since the seventy-two Clean Water Act. So we were able to do a lot this last session. Certainly was productive. We are with very few changes at, at a final design here. We got the Corps of Engineer dredging filter vent to work in the river. I think we got that. I got it in the mail today, but I think it was released Monday or Tuesday. The engineering has been approved by FERC, so everything's a go. The construction company's mobilizing, so things will be a little slow to start. And then they will be on a real hard and fast timeline, because they have to finish all of their exterior concrete work by, I think, I can't remember the date we set, right around December first, 'cause they don't wanna get into heating the outside to keep the concrete warm enough to cure. So we have a really exceptionally good company, second generation, family-owned. This is what they do, is work in rivers and build hydro sites and things like that. They are as good as it gets. And so we're really, really happy to be working with them. You don't always get to pick the bidder that comes in at the price that you can afford. And in this case, they really wanted to work with us, we wanted to work with them, and we figured out how to make that work out very well. I, on a side note, contacted the state police today. The first day the crane got dropped off, the, the tank got siphoned dry, so, which, you know, no surprises there.
So that...
So I contacted them, and I know that they do their loop right there, so they're just gonna keep an eye out. And we have a bunch of security cameras going in, but we need to get the electricity in, and so in the meantime, they were, of course, very helpful. They always are. And they're just gonna keep an eye out, and they sent a notice out to the sheriff's department as well.
Good. Good.
If you get a chance, I encourage you to grab your hard hat and go by and take a look. There's kind of some cool stuff. They pulled the old gate out of the way, so you can see the head of the pin stock and down there with Bill. And it's, it's pretty neat stuff that nobody's seen in, you know, who knows how long, certainly decades.
Yeah.
So, yeah, things are, things are trucking right along. Things are going very well, so, yeah, good stuff.
Good.
Any questions in particular about what we're doing?
No, I, not from me. I just wanted to see where you were, how things were.
Whatever happened with the stuff behind the dam? Just a question.
They will, um, the company we're working with, again, are very smart. So what they're doing right now is, if you were to go look at that, there's a set of old wooden gates that are in there at the, at the end of the intake canal. And then you go over the grating, and you look down to where the trash racks and the gates are, and it's all, it's pretty much dry down there. The gates have failed, but there's so much sediment up against it that it's actually plugging it pretty well. So they're actually gonna start downstream a little bit and restore the, the gates and the trash racks and do all that work. And then they'll move upstream in about three weeks and do all the dredging of everything behind the dam. They're actually leaving it there because it's holding the water back, and, and that, that's a good situation. It's just a lot safer. So they should be pulling that out, and I'm guessing they're gonna start in two or three weeks. They have to be done by October first, because we have to be out of the river by October first. They will pull all that out and set it with a bunch of barriers around it, and they'll let it de-water for about, I don't know. I think we're planning on about a month. It'll take a while before we can put it in a truck and ship it down the road. It'll just be too soupy. So that'll come out by October first, and then sometime on or by November first, it'll all be loaded into trucks and take off to a solid waste facility. So that's what's happening there.
Is there an intention to raise the, the dam?
We'll raise the dam. We'll put the, the same flashboards back in that were originally there. We're looking at putting in a crest gate instead, which is, it's a steel gate. It's automated. It's a little bit more reliable. You know, when you lose your flashboards, you know, you draw straws to figure out who's gonna walk across the top of the dam, and there's two and a half feet of water over it. So it's a lot better to put in a mechanized system. So we're, we're actually, we're pretty sure we know which one we're gonna get. It's between two, but we'll get a, either a steel or a hybrid steel and rubber gate that'll go in there. Just a lot safer. The state prefers it a lot, too, because it's easier on the upstream impoundment, just easier to control everything. So when you get a log, you can drop one gate and send it over, and it's a better, better plan all around.
What other questions I have?
The Housak Watershed Association, and where they wanna do some sort of portage for boats and stuff.
Yep.
Have you been talking with them at all?
I did. We met with them down there. We have a rough plan. Right now, I need to get a little bit of feedback from the state on whether or not we need to incorporate, whether or not they're ever gonna want upstream fish passage, or downstream. We haven't really been able, and they're busy with other things, and right now, that isn't a priority, because upstream and downstream, there's already barriers in the river, so they don't look at the one in the middle to fix first. But for us, we wanna kind of get an answer from them now on what they wanna do, so that we're incorporating it into this design phase. And whatever we do, even, even if we don't put in that passage for five years, we're planning for that now, so we're not ripping stuff out later. Once we know that, we're gonna probably use, there's, there's the road that they put in that's cut into the bedrock on the opposite side. We're probably gonna play off that, and then we'll just can a lever over the top of the dam. We'll have to come up with a design and get Corps of Engineers approval, but we have a plan. And it seems like a good, good and affordable plan, so.
Yeah, okay.
They're good people. We like working with them.
Good. 'Cause I'm trying to think of all the questions we've had through the years to do with this, the end of that, and I think that's pretty much where I'm at.
So you're gonna be working on the dam on the opposite side of where the house is?
Well, we're only working across the dam, but if we end up putting in, there, there's a big question about whether or not to put in a portage path, so that people canoeing down or kayaking down can get from upstream to downstream. And HURA, the Housak River Watershed Association, has been wanting to do that for a long time. So we think that in, in our design, we're gonna try to incorporate a way to facilitate that happening. Whether we do that, or they do that, or whoever does it, we wanna bring it into our design.
On the opposite side of the river?
Or on the side where the mill was.
On the opposite side of the river, yeah. There's, there's, it's actually land that's owned by the, you own the, the town owns the land. And there's a ledge that's, I, I wanna say it's sixteen feet wide. It was built to drive up to the face of the dam on that side. And it's a really nice ledge. You can walk right down to the river. It's actually just a real nice natural trail.
So they go up on the ledge and walk down to the river and continue on?
Yep, that, that's the plan. I mean, it's, there's some in-between parts that need to be figured out, so. But that's the plan, because so much of it is already there naturally, that why not just use that? And then we're bridging, you know, from the little impoundment upstream.
What hit in my mind was the Niagara Falls, where you walk down to...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Saying, what are you doing here?
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna do anything that grand, that's for sure.
Yeah, okay. No sluice way or anything like that, when you're thinking of fish going up and down migrating?
No, downstream, we'll probably do plunge pools or something like that, and we'll do it near, probably near the intakes. You wanna do it near your trash racks. That's just where fish are gonna be drawn, so you wanna, you wanna give them the opportunity to move downstream from somewhere near there. It's the most effective way to do it.
Super. That gives us, I think that gives everybody... Okay, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to talk about net metering.
Sound great.
And personnel.
I will come out and go back in.
Oh, you gotta come out and come back in, okay.
Call him, favor.
Aye.
Aye.